Meeting here in the City Administrative Center this week. Commissioner Oreller has the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings and mercies you show to us every day, even in the midst of all this uncertainty you provide for us, and for that we are grateful. Father, we ask for your guidance as we navigate through these difficult times. Grant us wisdom during our meeting so we can make all decisions according to your will. Be with our president and governor as they work to keep us safe. Be with our first responders and healthcare workers, protect them and keep them healthy and safe. Be with our community and give all of us grace and mercy as we adapt to this ever-changing situation. In your name we pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
So again, I want to direct your attention to the agenda. I know you've had a chance to look over the minutes. If there are no corrections or additions, so those minutes are stand as approved?
Looks good.
Great. So before we start our meeting in public comment, we just want to say thank you for helping us to adhere to the rules of the president of our state, the governor, but also on those of our local health department. And so we're just going to be kind and patient with one another today. We know that this is not our usual, and so we'll work through this together, and we're excited about you being here, for those of you who are here. And I know that several people are going to be joining by video. So we're excited about what's going to be happening today, so we just want to thank everyone for being here. And then with that, we would like to open it up for a public comment. Now, we'd like you to, if you come, please don't touch the mic, but if you'll speak your name into the mic, and then if you're not on the agenda, if you'll speak your name, come to the mic, and then again, please limit your public comment to five minutes so that we can have time for everyone. So again, we're opening up for a public comment. Is there anyone that has anything they'd like to say in public comment? Okay. With that being said, let's go ahead and we will go item, item four, item six, sorry.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from the Garden City Complete Count Committee to allow the mayor to proclaim April 1st, 2020 as census day in Garden City, Kansas. And I will read the proclamation. I know we have some folks here to speak to this item. Normally, folks would recognize that we'd come down and take a picture. We took care of taking individual pictures and giving a copy of the proclamation to the folks before, but I will, do you want to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Okay. And I'll read the proclamation, whereas Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandates that a census be conducted of the nation's population every 10 years, with the next census scheduled for April 1st, 2020. And whereas, it is vital all households in Garden City, Kansas, complete and submit a census survey, and every resident of our community counts and deserves to be counted. And whereas, the census plans to establish, or plans and, the census plays an essential role in identifying where resources are most needed, and will determine how the federal government distributes over $675 billion each year to communities nationwide for critical community service, education, healthcare, transportation, economic development, as well as other needs and services. And whereas, census data ensures fair congressional representation by determining how many elected congressional representatives and congressional districts each state will have. And whereas, it is essential accurate data, it is essential accurate data to be collected from groups of people who are historically difficult to count, including young children, low-income individuals, military personnel, non-native English speakers, minorities in rural residents. And whereas, the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas, it is very, it is important that every Garden City, Kansas counts, every voice matters, and that every person who lives in Garden City, Kansas, has equitable access to opportunities, resources, and representation. And whereas, the city hereby agrees to support the Garden City Complete Count Committee's effort to develop outreach activities to encourage, educate, and engage all residents. Now, therefore, I, Troy Arunru, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2020 as census day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge every resident to accurately complete the census survey online, over the telephone, or promptly return it by mail. Sign and seal the 17th day of March, 2020. And I invite at this time, anyone down that wants to speak to the census, who's up?
Thank you for reading that, Mr. Allen. We do appreciate you recognizing census day here in Garden City. And as part of our outreach efforts, we'd also like to have the proclamation read into the record in Spanish as well. And Idina Hernandez will do that from our partner agency, Genesis Family Health.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Garden City cuenta proclamación, reconociendo el día primero de abril del 2020 como día del censo en la ciudad de Garden City, Kansas. Considerado que el artículo primero, sección dos de la Constitución de los Estados Unidos establece que se realice un censo de la programación de la nación cada diez años, y el próximo censo está previsto para el primero de abril del 2020. Y considerado que es vital que todos los hogares de Garden City, Kansas, completen y representen una encuesta de censo, y cada residente de nuestra comunidad cuenta y merece ser contado. El censo juega un papel esencial en la identificación de donde se necesitan más recursos, y determina cómo un gobierno federal contribuye más de 675 mil millones cada año a las comunidades en todo el país para servicios comunitarios, críticos, educativos, atención médica, desarrollo económico, del transporte, así como otras necesidades y servicios. Los datos del censo garantizan una representación justa del Congreso al determinar cuántos representantes electos del Congreso y de distritos del Congreso tendrá cada uno. Y es esencial que se recopilen datos precisos del grupo de personas que son históricamente difíciles de contar, incluyendo niños, pequeños, personas de bajos ingresos, personas de militar, hablante de inglés, no nativos, minoría, y residentes rurales. Y considero que la información recopilada por el censo es confidencial y está protegida por la ley. Es importante que todos en Garden City, Kansas cuenten cada voz importa, y que cada persona que vive en Garden City, Kansas tenga acceso equitativo a oportunidades, recursos, y representación. Considerando que la ciudad de Garden City por la presente acuerda apoyar los esfuerzos del comité de conde completo de Garden City, Kansas para desarrollar actividades de divulgación para alertar, educar, e involucrar a todos los residentes. Yo, Troy Arunru, el alcalde de Garden City, Kansas, proclamo el día primero de abril del 2020 como el día del censo en la ciudad de Garden City, e insto a todos los residentes a completar con precisión la escuela, la encuesta del censo en línea por teléfono o devolverla rápidamente por correo. Firmado este 17 de marzo del 2020.
Thank you so much.
Good job, thank you.
Wonderful. Melissa, do you have anybody else who would like to speak?
I just, we have the state representative from U.S. Census Bureau here, as well as a variety of other people that supported us in some of our census outreach effort, who participated in the video, who are with us through family, our Catholic charity services. And so Carlos would like to speak, roll.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm a partnership specialist with the United States Census. I drove six hours to be here because this is important to us, and we're standing down. After this meeting, I'm the last one allowed to travel, so.
Yes.
Yes, nobody is, Kansas and Oklahoma, we're all standing down. I wanted to remind you the importance of the census at this critical moment. One of the key selling points right now is that now more than ever, every Kansas need to be doing the census, so that the state and federal government knows exactly what kind of help we're going to need in the state of Kansas should these or any other emergencies happen. So this is a key point to remind people, this is the reason we need an accurate count. Everybody counts, so that we know what kind of help we may need in the future. So with that, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Might add that Carlos has been out here several times, and so it's nice to, that state officials coming from the east side of the state make it all the way to Garden City. We're excited when they do it once, and he's done it. He's done it several times over.
We can adopt him here. He needs a place to live, we'd love to have him. Thank you so much.
Item 6B, Steve Dyer, Real Men, Real Leaders Board Member, requests the governing body consider and allow the mayor to proclaim April 23rd, 2020 as Real Men, Real Leaders Day.
I make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Similarly, we did the photo opportunity with Steve and gave him the proclamation prior to the meeting, and I believe, Mayor, you have.
I'll take the easier one to read, thank you for everything. So I just want to say upfront, this is a wonderful organization, and it means a lot to a lot of people. And so the work that Real Men, Real Leaders do, we would love to be down there with you and shaking hands, and also just standing with you, telling you thank you for the work. So this proclamation is, whereas Garden City, Kansas is a community which acknowledges the need to invest in the local youth through regular mentorship, and Garden City, Kansas is a community which acknowledges Real Men, Real Leaders, as an organization that works toward building strong principles and character in young men. And whereas, Garden City, Kansas is a community which chooses to support the mission of Real Men, Real Leaders, reaching out to our youth across racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic lines, and guiding them so that they may fulfill their potential in becoming caring, giving, productive, and responsible citizens. And whereas, Garden City, Kansas encourages organizations like Real Men, Real Leaders to continue working toward equipping young men with the viable life skills. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Troy Arunru, Mayor of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 23rd, 2020 to be Real Men, Real Leaders Day. I urge each individual in the community to take the time on this day to support the mission of Real Men, Real Leaders, and to acknowledge all those around who have committed to making the community a better place by mentoring local youth. Signed and sealed the 17th day of March, 2020. See, did you want to say anything? We just appreciate you being here, and so yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Just real briefly, Ronaldo Mesa, who is the Chair of Real Men, Real Leaders, is going to get, say a quick couple of words about the history of the program. It's what, 10 years old?
Yes.
10 years old. And then I'm going to give you the reason why we chose the 23rd of April for Real Men, Real Leaders Day, so just a couple of that.
I wrote me a few notes down, because I do have a tendency to forget. But I do want to thank the mayor and the governing body and the staff for this proclamation. You know, we started this organization with a handful of us, and we now have a 10-member board, actually, there should be 12, so I'm looking for two more in case anybody's interested. And we've come a long way. We have a nice, decent budget, and we have office space now located in the Boy Scout Building. Our staff consists of Jonas Cruz as our program director, and Susan Escorino is our grant writer, and office manager, and Octavio, Octavio Ortega is Jonas's assistant. You know, after doing some research, we just felt like men in this community, as community leaders, needed to step up and to help our young boys in this community. So after we had done some research, we felt like the fifth and sixth grade boys was the target boys. And the schools that feed our program come from Charles Stones, Bernadine Setts, and St. Mary's School. And really, you know, we just want to instill our young men and hopefully improve their lives in school, at home, and in this community. And these young, and these young boys also have learned to serve, because we're teaching them, in order to lead, you have to serve. And as of last year, in the last year, our young boys have volunteered over 800 hours of community service to a variety of groups in this community.
Thank you.
We also expose them to both public and private organizations, so they understand how our community works. And we're hoping to treat, tweak the program this year, and even make it even more better, and maybe even take it outside of Garden City to other communities. This community's been very giving and supportive of us and our young men, and so we really appreciate all that you've done, and as well as this community. And we just hope to continue to improve these boys' lives. I'm grateful and thankful for, or we're grateful and thankful to the school district. We now have a place where we know where these boys are at with their grades, and their behavior, their discipline, and so forth. And thanks to the school district, Mr. Carlin, Dr. Carlin, and the board members for working with us, and the parents, because we, everybody had to sign off on that. And so we wanted to know that, you know, when Jonas goes, picks up these boys, you know, they're just not going to go with us and have a lot of fun. We need to know what's going on in the school. So we've changed that this past year, and it's really working. So, in a nutshell, that's what, that's what we do. And like I said, we hope to improve the program as the years come, and improve the lives of these young men as they pursue their educational, whether it's technical, four-year, or even helping them with finding a job. We want to be there for them. So thanks so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Just real quickly, this was my speech, I crossed it out. All I'm going to say is, the 23rd of April was scheduled to be our annual banquet.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's when we recognize the good things the program does and the kids do, and we have a featured speaker. There's an invitation on each one of your chairs there, along with a pen and a brochure about the program. Just real quickly, Reggie Robinson, who's the CEO of the Kansas Health Foundation, he's going to, he was scheduled to be our speaker, our keynote speaker, was scheduled for April 23rd, which is the reason for the date. We're really looking at trying to keep him as our speaker and moving it back. The board hasn't officially decided that, but we meet next week to do that. But the invitation's in front of you, please read his bio on the back. If you want to look at a real leader and a real mentor, Reggie is that. I don't know, I'm personally, but several of you probably do. So just official invite, thanks again for proclamation and for letting us speak a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
He's one of our persons. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to hand this to Steve? We can get it to him later. There's the room.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Sorry. Okay. Did you want to make any changes here, or do you want to go ahead and have the report?
You know, I think if you don't mind, we can jump down and take care of new business, we can clear the room. I think the person waiting for item 7A will appreciate the fact that we'll try to limit the population in the room a little bit. So if the commission would draw their attention in the agenda packet to item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the development agreement, hang on just a second, I gotta find mine. An amendment to the development agreement for East Cambridge Phase 3 to allow the building of homes with conditions before the acceptance of streets. And then I'll ask Carol to, sorry, Carol, I completely forgot about staging over the other room.
Okay. We're like going out of order here.
Yes, we are.
Because I'm like watching it, I'm like, wait, 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 what?
Well, thank you for your flexibility.
We're getting through the meeting really fast today.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Powers of deduction.
It's like, what happened to the other reports? I didn't have to get through my guess. Okay, let me find the right one here. Okay, so East Cambridge, East Cambridge Phase 3 Development, they are doing kind of the same thing that Chapel Heights Phase 3 did a few weeks, well, probably about a month ago. They have all of their infrastructure in except for the top layer of the road, and they would like to get started on building the houses. So their development agreement says they can't start on the houses until the infrastructure's been completed and accepted by the city. So we are, they are proposing to amend their development agreement to allow for them to start the houses before that top layer is put on the, on the street. Two conditions that staff is proposing on this amended development agreement, and that would be, number one, that the roads stay barricaded, that no vehicle traffic be allowed on it. If traffic is on it, they would be required to do a two-year maintenance bond as opposed to one, or they could keep the streets as private property, and that after a year, turn them over to the city and then have just a one-year bond. The second condition is that they are to keep the road clear of water, snow, any, anything that would ruin the base layer, that would sink down and kind of ruin the base layer, and then also for staff to come out and do an inspection of the infrastructure or the street before they layer that top layer. Staff does recommend approval with, with these two conditions that were mentioned, and the developer, we have talked with them, the developers, I should say, it's a group of them, we have talked to them about these conditions, and they agree to them as well.
I make a motion, we approve the amendment to the East Cambridge Phase 3 Development Agreement as proposed.
May I second?
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Carol, thank you.
See you, guys. Item 7A, Dr. Lindsey Burns, Finney County Health Department Medical Director, will present an update to the City Commission regarding the coordinated community awareness and public health effort regarding novel coronavirus COVID-19, as well as an update regarding the coordinated emergency preparedness planning that has been taking place in Finney County.
So I also, just before Dr. Burns starts, we're going to have a chance for, to ask everyone to ask questions if you have that, and then if that's all right, if we have. Do we have any other questions, like from the public that they've emailed in?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So we'll give you guys each a chance to ask questions after Dr. Burns presents, and then that way we'll make sure we get everything answered, especially since it's recorded and we also have the video. So, welcome, we are so grateful you're here, thank you for all that you're doing.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to come and speak with you today. I want to tell you that the Finney County Health Department, in conjunction with county CEDR and city leadership, and this team that has stepped into the room here behind me that has all been working diligently, we convened early last Monday morning and have been rolling specific plans, trying to anticipate what's going to happen, and at the same time standing up what we feel is a pretty strong communication system that directly is for our residents here in Finney County to get the most applicable information to them that is very consistent with what we're hearing from multiple agencies. I will tell you that my sources of information, and I think consistent information is so key at this time, have been CDC, KDHC, trying to make sure that our message is streamlined so that folks who are accessing information through the multiple different ways that are available, and agencies that are giving up-to-date information is consistent. And we've tried to do that through our communications team, and the Finney County Public Information Officer, Sarah McClure, as well as our Health Department Medical Information Officer, well, that's not, you're not a medical information officer, you might be after this. Maggie Unruh have been controlling the messaging, and we've been trying to vet that through the most reliable sources again at the service of our community. Also, Dana Ontiveros is the lead nurse out at the Health Department, we've been working hand in hand. She's leading actual operations on the ground as far as our testing and clinical evaluation. And we can speak more to the specifics to that, because I know that's an area of concern and a lot of questions. We've tried to simplify that and make that as streamlined along with our health system and providers here in the county, so that everybody's getting the same directions, literal directions, here is where you go. And that's the message we've been trying to get to the community. Also, Steve Green has joined us, he's our emergency management director, and he's probably, we're more familiar with each other than he ever thought we would be. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that in this community, we've been able to stand up a pretty good operation pretty quickly, strictly because of our interconnected nature. This morning, as I, as I mentioned, I've been paying attention to everything that's been coming out of both the CDC, KDHC, but also the governmental organizations, and watching a lot of press conferences. Maybe everyone was tuned in this morning for the White House Task Force press conference, it was very educational, useful. Last night, the CDC, yesterday, the CDC, Dr. Fauci, as part of the National Institute of Infectious Disease and Allergies, had said more advanced community guidance is coming. We have been working off of community guidance models based on, this is how many cases you have in your community. When our testing situation fell short of that, we weren't able to use that as a reliable marker. So they've rolled that out. In addition, they've rolled out the President's Plan for Containment, and I'd like for that to, that's not the official title, but I had shared that document with you, and I think it's incredibly useful, I was hoping maybe Matt could put it up on the screen, and we could go through that point by point, because it is similar to what we're, I mean, it is what we're doing here in the county, and I can tell you more specifically how that applies to us.
Yeah, so this is the, this was current when the packet went out.
Yeah.
The world changes every 24 hours.
Is there any way, I emailed it to you, could you pull that PDF up on your email? Do you want to do that on the broadcast?
And I believe, I can get it on the, the Finney County website, right? If I go into your, is that right?
Yes. I would tell you that the first line of it says, adhere to your local and state officials' guidance. So in that, in that service, we have been posting all of our information publicly on our Facebook page at the Health Department, as well as pushing it through, proactively through a message tree. You'll notice the signs downstairs, that was one of our initial urgent interventions. We've got to get actual signs in appropriate languages up around town. The criteria for what folks should be watching out for has changed as evolution of virus has changed and impet, excuse me, impacted more of our, more of our country. With regard to testing, let me just start. What this signage says is, if you have fever, respiratory symptoms, stop, stop, don't come in here, don't potentially infect other people, please call this hotline. We have a screening process that's set up. Maggie's been manning that during the Health Department hours, we've partnered certainly very closely in all of her endeavors, but with the hospital to also man that. And that was a joint, not just for an information campaign, which is incredibly important in one of the tenants of public health practice, but also in an attempt that we need to appropriately move people to the right places. We don't want a crush of people going to the emergency department seeking testing. That could potential change contagion in that environment and overload their sources. I want to say, everyone's doctor, everyone's nurse, everyone's provider wants to be available to you. Do that by phone unless you are an extremis. In no way are we asking people to isolate yourselves from the connectivity that allows us to gain help. What we are saying is isolate yourselves from those face-to-face interactions, because with the droplet transmission of a virus, that's how you spread disease, and that's what all of these interventions are going for. So, back to the, the messaging campaign. As things are coming down from CDC, for instance, Sunday night, it was, we strongly recommend no gatherings, more than 50 people for the next eight weeks. We pushed that out. We pushed that out. That was a little bit earlier than, than the governor coming in and saying, I'm going to, I'm going to essentially make an executive order stating this. My idea is that if we get, not just my idea, the public health's idea, is if we get people the proper information, they will assess the situation within their lives, their behavioral patterns, what their business activity or business model is, and make the best decisions to protect themselves, their family, and their community. And that's what we're asking for. I know that businesses are very concerned about, how do I, how do I adhere to this executive order in my restaurant? Well, let's do everything you can. We are going to charge every person with a personal responsibility in disease control here to say, how do I adapt and make my, my life, my household, my business work within these parameters? Okay? That's a big task. It's more than inconvenient, it is a huge change, it is a total 180, but that's what we're asking to do. The situation with testing, initially, the signage idea was to direct people to testing. It has now moved to a more, if you have symptoms, how can we best direct you away from other people that you might infect, honestly? Cases are important, I know everybody is focused on the number of cases that have been identified. I will tell you that that number is misleadingly low. Assume it is here, assume community transmission is here. We, scientists- We scientifically, which is very hard for all of us as doctors to understand, and why we don't have the, the guidance in the models to, to really give you a good risk assessment, is because everything has been built on our ability to test, and that has fallen short. Right now, there are criteria from KDHE that state, you must document a fever and cough or shortness of breath, which is not always the natural progression of that virus, some people will present and be positive without presenting at the time for testing with fever. But we had to establish some sort of criteria. You also have to have some other testing done whether, to determine whether or not they will, the eligibility to run that test. So, we have been trying to get everybody who gets a, a positive screen in for the hotline to come to the Health Department, as I said, and during our operational hours, the, the emergency room at Centura's been doing this in the off-hours, and then we are doing testing with our limited capability and the limited number of test kits that we have for those folks. Last week, I was very optimistic that our testing capability would be ramped up, I continue to be optimistic, but I can tell you that we have an incredibly limited number of tests, and this is for a directed testing strategy. Ideally, in this sort of situation, from an epidemiological standpoint, we should be doing surveillance testing, because this droplet transmission is happening in people who are asymptomatic. That is the principle that's guiding this very strong recommendation to stand six feet away from people, hoping your droplets don't make it six feet. That is the only tool we have right now to stop the spread of this disease. Believe me when I say, it will be effective, but it has to be everyone doing it. We do not have a vaccine, we do not have an antiviral treatment, all we have is supportive cares. So the, the tool that we have is something that every single American, every single person in Finney County can deploy right now, is social distancing, and it's a real valuable tool. I'm more than happy to answer questions, like I said, I think it'd be very helpful for everyone to look at this presidential plan, it's a, the most overarching guidance we've had from a centralized standpoint. This, I understand, is not the American way, everything is, you know, figure, figure out what's best for you, we don't want to do overarching directives, but it is very necessary. And I think the President especially has shown great leadership on this in the last 48 hours, and the White House Task Force that is working on this is populated by some very knowledgeable scientists, and we should be listening to those voices. Here it is, thank you Matt, see? Look at this happening, look at this happening.
Good introduction.
All right, so there's that hotline. Here I am, doing my very best. Everything in every direction that anybody is giving is only for the good of the public, that is our only intention. If you feel sick, stay home. Stay home, do not go to work, you can always contact your medical provider. Don't try, unless you are extremist, and, and obviously, if you cannot breathe, call EMS. We've been working with EMS in the hospital to provide good isolation pathways to bring people into the hospital, and so that would be the best route, but not everyone can call EMS, we also have to be very respectful of those resources, so please, reserve that for when you're an extremist. For the most part, everybody who can just take care of themselves at home. This also applies to your children. If someone in your household has tested positive, I would go further to describe, because of the limited testing available to us, is if anyone is sick, keep the whole household at home. Now all of those folks have been, have been exposed, we have to think about this, and we all have to become epidemiologists and understand what our contacts are, and limit those unessential, those unnecessary contacts. If you're an older person, I know that this is scary, because everyone in the media, the messages we're getting is, this will be most severe for those folks who are older and immune compromised. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of people that we love, and that's very scary and isolating for folks who may already be isolated. So this is where I think we really employ our networks, our social networks, our technology, and we start doing it now, start checking up on people, whether that's through your church network, whether that's through your neighborhood network, whatever you can do. Don't unnecessarily expose yourself, but keep checking up on people. We've already seen that there are some empty shelves at the store, that's hard on everybody, maybe other folks didn't have the ease to go to the store beforehand, check in on your neighbors, see what they need, leave it on their porch. Visuals are important, look at this room, this is important, this is how hard it is to stay six feet away. We do have to start thinking about not touching each other, make a phone call, make the FaceTime, knock through the door, that kind of thing. That kind of goes on, I think that there's another page to it, if we go down a little bit, because I know it speaks to what we're going to call essential businesses, critical infrastructure, this is important. As a physician, I've been told, it is my personal responsibility to keep myself as healthy as possible because I'm going to be called upon and conscripted into this, that's my ethical duty, that's the professional oath I took. There's a lot of folks out there, but there's a lot of really critical folks who are going to be doing some really critical functions that keep our, our city running, making sure there is food there when you go to the grocery store. And I think everybody, again, these measures are going to protect those folks too, it's going to be for the good of all of us. We are working with industries, I know that's been some question to local businesses, leaders, trying to problem solve how we're going to do all of this, and again, this is a team of leadership across the city and county and with emergency management. Social gatherings and groups in less than 10 people, it was 50 yesterday, and then the President said 10, and everybody said 10's the number. Is there a scientific number for you? One, you can't infect yourself, everything else is risk mitigation, okay? I'm not saying everybody has to stand around in a bubble, I understand that's not feasible, but if we're really going to talk about it, that's how you have to sort of conceptualize these things. I canceled my five-year-old's birthday, he's mad, he will, he will survive, it will be okay, and we will figure out a plan later on. So let's, let's really be very serious about, about that, and it's going to be, it's a sacrifice for everybody, including our five-year-olds. I, I like this, this avoid, avoid eating or drinking in, in bars and restaurants and food courts, that doesn't mean everybody has to shut down, pickup options are okay. We also have to think about those delivery and pickup people being safe. The very nice man at Pizza Hut put a plastic glove on before he took my credit card, I said, "You're smart." He said, "Thank you." For him, protects him, protects me. These are things that I am asking and tasking people to look within their business operations and do what you can do. And so is the President. See, we're trying to make even messaging. Avoid discretionary travel, I know this came right with spring break, a lot of people made very wise choices with that, and, and I appreciate that, and I think that's going to continue for a while. Industry leaders, if you all, we're not aware, I should let you know, industry leaders in the nursing community, certainly because of the incredible vulnerable population, but also the cases that have happened, including one here in Kansas that's been documented in Wyandotte County, nursing homes have closed to all non-essential visitors, and they're being very aggressive with screening procedures with anybody coming into the facility as our hospitals, as our clinics. At the, at the end always, and as every public health practitioner will tell you, practice good hand hygiene today and always, okay? It can't be emphasized enough. But I really think, I really absolutely believe that if we all do our part, and it's going to take everybody, it can't take one person doing what they want and nine of us doing what, it's going to take everybody, but I absolutely believe we will get through this. We have a plan, we've been working very diligently, and I want to give assurance to folks that we are going to get through this. And with that, I guess I'll take questions, or I'd open it up to Dana, or Steve, or any members of our communications team that's, that's here, that has been working very hard and can speak to some things better than I.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead, and if they want to say something, then we'll open it up to Commissioners for questions, so. Anything you wanted to say?
Thanks a lot, we appreciate the opportunity to speak before you folks. I've been here a month, and I can contest the fact that things happen fast around here. And first of all, I want to thank Dr., thank, thank our physician, he's made, he's been instrumental in driving this, and thank Mr. Allen and Mr. Reese, our county administrator, they really postured us in a forward-leaning position, challenging us to reach out to the private sectors, as well as the public sectors, build some continuity in our response and how we mitigate ourselves and, and position ourselves to respond. And we've done those things. Some of the challenges we're dealing with right now is developing some, some contingencies with our, our volunteer section, the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, to indeed support those people that may potentially be quarantined for a long period of time. We've got meetings scheduled for them, we're developing some, some structured plans to integrate and vet them through leadership and make sure we can apply those things. But we are working off our emergency operations plan, predominantly ESF six and eight, I don't know if you're familiar with those, but it kind of drives some of this, some of these types of events. So working with our Health Department, we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to think outside the box, making sure we really provide the service that our residents and visitors deserve. So thank you for the opportunity, we appreciate it.
Welcome to Finney County. Yeah, you'll never have this experience again. So Commissioner Orellana, you will start, and we'll just go around the horn, and then we'll get a chance.
Well, my question comes from the social service agencies in town, and especially like the AMEA's house. What kind of advice do you have for them for their operations in, you know, because they're dealing with such a different population?
Absolutely, I think actually I was reading a nice document that I think it was Andover Food Bank put out about their, how they're dealing with kind of doing everything from a pickup standpoint, and how they're changing their hours and their staffing, again, trying to diminish the contacts even within their workflow, just maybe having a few staff handling this, or separating them in time and, and place, and then also their hygiene procedures around that. So I do recognize that food is going to be a central resource for so many folks as we become more isolated, certainly if kids are kept out of school and these kind of measures, and I do think it's to our community to start building up a plan for that, and I, and I recognize the AMEA's house will be on the front end of that as well, but at this time, I would say if they could reorganize their operations to try and do really truly a pickup or drop-off system, that would be much better.
And what about for their housing?
For the shelter? I think you keep, you treat it like a household.
Okay.
You treat it like a household. With a lot more people, but yes.
Right, okay.
I see the phone number everywhere, is that for just more general information, or is that for if you get sick, you need to call, or?
No.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
Absolutely, and I would, I want Maggie and Dana, because this feeds into each other, it's an information line, and then it also feeds into a clinical piece, and so they're the ones actually doing it. Maggie's the one taking the call, so I'll have her explain it.
Sure, so that number that you've seen posted everywhere, 620-272-3600, because I'll take the opportunity to repeat it again, has kind of a dual purpose. So that is the main Health Department line that anybody would call to make an appointment in general, but when they call the number now, they will be prompted to do a couple of things. The first is, they can press option one, and they'll hear in English and in Spanish the current status of COVID-19 in Kansas, and so that's going to give the number of cases in Kansas, as posted by the KDHE, the number of cases in Finney County, when there are some, and then the health recommendation, as we continue getting more and more updates, as well as a place to find more information. And then the second is, if they press option two, it's going to take them to a representative working the hotline, and during Health Department hours, that is a nurse at the Health Department, and during those outside hours, that is somebody from St. Catherine's emergency room, and that person will take them through a series of questions, just to assess their risk, assess their symptoms, likeliness of exposure, and then depending on what their, where that assessment goes, they will be given further instruction, whether that is to stay home, self-isolate, monitor your symptoms, or instructions as to come to the Health Department to be tested, and some specific things about what that looks like, just so we can continue to take safety precautions for our staff and, as well as other patients at the Health Department, such as stay in your car and call us when you get here, we'll send somebody out in that personal protective equipment, just things like that. Dana, is there anything I'm missing on that area?
No, I think that's, I think she pretty much covered it all, just with the, I'm sure everybody's heard the, the recent positive case with, in our Ford County, in our county right next to us. I do foresee that some of those testing criteria may change, they may become a little bit more lax. We are still very limited on the supplies we have to test for COVID-19, but we will continue to assess and, you know, test as KDHE indicates us to test.
Thank you.
Yes, with that, again, when the testing becomes available, we are going to make it as available as possible, we are not looking to restrict people from getting testing. Right now, we're trying to be realistic with what we actually have supplies for. So what I would say is, at this time, the isolation piece is also, don't, don't just don't call because, well, they don't have tests anyway. One, if we can test more people, we can compel more tests, we can get more equipment, and we want, we are also doing a disease tracking investigation piece of this that's really important, trying to diminish contacts. We need to know if you're sick, where you are, maybe we're, we're going to be able to test you, maybe we're not, again, based on that criteria, although that criteria was revised last Friday, so we're due for another revision. So please, please, please utilize the hotline, we're going to be here for you, you're going to talk to somebody locally, we're going to give you good information.
Commissioner Dick, do you have questions?
Two, one, just to be clear, if, if we are self-isolation, if we do that, you would like to be notified at, through that number to know that?
Yeah, I, I do, call and say, here's what's going on.
Right.
I'm a city commissioner and was sitting in a meeting with X number of people, and now I'm febrile and coughing. We would like to know that, Commissioner Dick, we would, because we would like to call this commissioner and that commissioner and that commissioner. That's exactly what disease testing is, and, and we, you can understand, or tracking is, not testing, I got to get away from saying testing, that's my doctor brain, tracing, because that's the public health epidemiology piece that says, we have to now make sure you're self-isolating, and we got to know what all of these other people are doing too, and that's where you're going to see just waves, just waves of people. And honestly, that's where a lot of the directives for people to just, like you're seeing in San Francisco, where it's, hey, shelter in place, kind of takes out the middleman, just says, just do that.
The second is, what are some good ideas, like, like you're talking about with the pizza driver that wore gloves, because as I think we see more food delivery or pickup, what's, what's some strategies to reduce risk in those situations?
I think it's the hygiene, it goes back to the hygiene, think about how many things you touch, back and forth, passing that credit card back and forth, oh, salad bars, touching that spoon, and then the next guy goes and touches the spoon, and so that's why I'm saying for individual businesses, look around what you're doing, don't wait for the phone call from me to say, hey, you want to reconsider doing that? I, I, I'm, I'm one person, they're, they're, look at our staff, this is it. So we're doing everything we can, but we really need to enlist everybody with your public health mind to, to do that yourselves. So wash your hands, like I said, the guy at Pizza Hut put a glove on, those kind of things may make all the difference in the world.
I wanted to jump in on that one, so as Sarah and I continue talking about what are the continuing communications as we develop this strategy, and so with Governor Kelly's executive order, and as that full text has been released, we're going to be updating the community today and tomorrow as to what that is, and providing some of those health recommendations, just to get people started, with restaurants, with the gyms and fitness facilities, with churches, just so people have it flatlined out in front of them to get the ball rolling, but that kind of proactive approach with everybody's independent business and organization is going to be key, as Dr. Burns mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
None.
Commissioner Ortiz?
I don't know if it's a question, more of just planning ahead as far as what Dr. Burns is, you know, saying, we do have scheduled events coming up, and I think it is in our best interest to protect not only everyone, but ourselves too, so just make a reasonable judgment on whether to have those events is, is, is key.
I could give you some more directed guidance on timeline, because I know this came up with our Public Works at the, at the county, and this is as of Sunday night, the CDC says, no gatherings, more than 50 people for eight weeks. So at least eight weeks.
So that's the middle of April, is that correct, or, or the end of April?
Middle of April. Dude, it's October day.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you for, yeah. It's St. Patrick's Day. Yeah, St. Patrick's Day, yeah, so I, I do have green on them. I do want to ask a couple of questions, I've been having some phone calls, there are people who are, have some time on their hands and want to be helpful. So where do they call, or how can they help, we've had a lot of people who say, you know, I mean, I have the capability to do something, rather than sitting around, they would like to do something, and so is, do they call the hotline number, or where would you ask them to contact so that they could be helpful?
Yeah, so I've had some of those calls as well, we have people who want to go care for our community, whether that's the We have people who want to go care for our community, whether that's the elderly people or as more things are closed down or at reduced levels, what can they be doing? And so you can direct those calls to me at the health department, just press option three and ask to speak to Maggie. We're working with public and private folks about what can we do to care for these people at-risk populations. So feel free to direct them to me. We're hoping to have something that we can do and a way to mobilize people within the next few.
What was that number again?
620-272-3600. Thanks so much, Commissioner.
We add something to that. We're real sensitive to getting people exposed, obviously, right? So, you know, we want to make sure we can control that movement and that volunteer flow. So we're in the process of building some contingencies. So once you go through Maggie and Sarah, they're going to filter through us. We can identify those people. We can prioritize what their capabilities are so we don't overextend them or put them in a situation where they could be exposed. So, you know, it's really imperative we maintain control of that movement and that flow, that volunteerism. That's why we're focused on utilizing our Red Cross and Salvation Armies because they're already written into our plan. And then we can backfill with those various entities. We're real sensitive about that, so we need to maintain some fluency there.
Yeah. And in the meantime, if you are a citizen who's wanting to do something, FaceTime your friend who lives alone or your grandma or give them a call, you know, like Dr. Burns was talking about earlier, these are really isolating times. And so instead of going over to visit them, give them a phone call, give them a FaceTime message. See if your elderly neighbors need you to go pick something up from the store and leave it on the porch. There are ways that we can have contact with people while still not having physical contact with people. And so getting creative about some of those things, how you personally can reach out to the people that you are connected to are going to be key.
Thank you. Dr. Burns, the last question I have, and I think they may have thought of something, but the other question I've been asked is, so if they suspect that they are infected or they have something, how far back, as far as like listing out the contacts or the places they've been, how far back do you want them to go or what's your recommendation? And because a lot of people are trying to figure out, so how many days back? Or I know you want them to list the places and the people, but I wasn't really sure what, I said I would ask that question, so.
Right. This is where things really go off the rails. People are likely transmitting this, and this is why even asymptomatic individuals need to lessen their large contacts because people are transmitting this in an asymptomatic manner. By the time that you become symptomatic, you've already spread it to several people. Estimates are seven to 14 days. I can't give you a specific, but if someone came down with COVID in our county right now and had just been on an airplane, I'd be trying, in the last week, I'd be trying to find that airplane manifest. If someone in this room becomes a case here in the next seven days, we would be notifying all of you. But you can see with how many touches and interactions and visits we make through one day, it is hard to figure out what your contacts are. There are certainly going to be critical contacts. People, I would encourage you to contact your employer right away. Individual employers are setting up policies for how they're, you know, dealing with their workforce. That's really important, notifying people. But I understand going back to seven, 14 days and figuring out where you were is a nearly impossible task. And so that's why going forward, make it easier for yourself and decrease your contacts. But seven to 14 days has been the, kind of the number that's been floated by experts.
One last quick question, or I know information's kind of king on this thing. It changes hourly. And I know we have this 15-day to slow spread. Is there a centralized website that we can go to that we can communicate? I know the phone number, 620-272-3600, but.
Congratulations.
I mean, is there a place where we have like a clearinghouse of all the information for people that we can announce that to?
That may be a changing thing too, as we need to get to bigger platforms or more platforms, but let me speak.
And I know, and I know you said social media, but is there like a website that we can announce to everybody?
Sure, I'll take that one. So we're using the Fannie County website currently to provide some of the things that are outside of the KDHE toolkit. We link to that on there. That's the one Matt pulled up earlier, fanniecounty.org/coronavirus. So that is a separate page from our health department page. So some things that you may have seen out there, we've tried to put scam alerts. This malware alert came out, a live map of the, up on the top left, Matt in the blue, myths and scam alerts. So this is obviously a work continuing in progress. So whatever information specific that we feel is from us, we're going to put out here when we think that some of these other things, like Dr. Burns, the post that she just went over, we're going to make that available here as well as when we put it out. But the KDHE, this is really the main source, and it looks like they've updated that page even. The Resource Center is probably, if you scroll down, they've updated this. When did they do this today? Looks like just now. So right here, these blue options, these are the toolkits that we talk about. So this is what's pushed to our message tree. So this is really the basis, the core of what we're providing people at this point because we are taking that directly from KDHE. So we're sending it to you in an easy, already downloaded format. I say to you, Commissioner, because he's one of the main contacts on our tree. So we're sending that to the tree. But we've just, for purposes of ease of online usability, it's like this. So that's the core of the resources and then yes, as we get more, it's going up here.
Thank you.
I have a comment on the tree.
Sure.
I know everyone is getting a million emails right now. I'm getting one from every professional association, every medical staff I'm on, 50 a day. Please pay attention to the ones coming from you locally. We are relying on that message tree to get that information out, okay? That's going to the chamber, the chamber's going to businesses, it's going to Commissioner Sessner, that's going to the schools. We are counting on you as that link in the chain to maintain that information. And if I could just say, information is one of the biggest tools in public health. That's what we're deploying right now. So you're all part of that.
I had a question. When you are going back and contacting people that had previous contact with a person that suspected to have a case, how is that contact coming in place? I mean, is it through a phone, right?
Yes, it is through phone, through a disease investigation that's being run on a local basis, but also in conjunction with KDHE and their EpiTrax. That's part of our disease investigation role as your health department.
So that phone number will come through as, is it coming through as a local phone number? Because I mean, we had the, I mean, we're at the point previously where you get four or five junk phone calls a day.
I believe it would come.
Best case scenario, just answer every phone call you get right now because it could be.
I believe it would come from the Fannie County main number or a extension of that, but I honestly don't know that I know that more than what I would.
If you are a person under investigation, a PUI, we would get the information through our EpiTrax, which is the direct communication between KDHE and the local health department, which is Fannie County Health Department. We would then contact each individual that they have listed as a PUI and in turn they're enlisted who they've been in contact with. So that is information only to our disease investigation personnel.
Right. And PUI is person of interest?
Person under investigation.
Under investigation.
So my point is, if you're getting phone calls, I mean, it used to be, my default was just let it go to voicemail, but let's not do that, especially if it's from a 620 number.
It would be from your local health department.
Okay, so it'd be from our specific number.
I assume it's still going to read 272-3600, but.
Okay.
It is. And if you're under investigation, you will know that you are. We will be in contact with you. So people will know the calls are coming.
Right, it's just that initial, like if we're trying to, like if you're trying to track down everybody in this meeting, obviously answer right away is better than two or three, four hours later.
There's one more note on the, just the hotline number. It is the health department number. We chose that for a reason because that's already published out there. So if anybody can't remember the hotline, it's just the health department number. It's on our website. You just Google the health department, it's the main number.
272-3600? Yeah. Okay, I just was checking.
Put it in your phone as Fannie County Health Department so that when they call, you already have it on your ID.
That's a good point, probably just add it now ahead of time in case you do need to, so you don't have to try it.
Right. And we mentioned that the hospital is partnered with us in that, again, we've been very careful about defining our roles, working complementary. You take this, we'll take that, but not confusing the community. So you call that number, we're all, have the same expectation of what those, where those patients are gaining information or being directed to. I'm talking to folks at the hospital every day about what we're, where patients are, what we're doing testing-wise, where we need to look for contacts, those kinds of things. That was designed in that manner. So in no way is this excluding the healthcare system. I've tried to include, and not just Centura, but also Genesis, the Grow Well Clinic, like I said, the nursing homes, places. I've tried to identify all of the places people seek healthcare or health information and include that in a consistent way.
Dr. Burns, I know we've taken extra time on this and so thank you for your patience. And again, we appreciate you being the trusted source. I don't think we can thank you enough to you and your team. And we are hoping for some very good reports coming up from our following guidelines and making sure as a community that we're being safe. So thank you again for all that you're doing. And if there's anything else that you need to make sure, please don't hesitate to call Matt or call us and we'll make sure we get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
As we take a breath, as we just transitioned just for a moment here, that's a lot.
It'll take just a moment for me to find out where we were in the first place. Okay, I think we're ready for 7B. And so we've got details of a community contest to name the new aquatics facility. And I think Andy's going to present this.
I got it. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Today opens up a survey for the naming of the pool. And so this is part of the process of Confluence working through theming ideas in association with this project. Just want to read a few things to make the public aware of this and give them the address to go to online and to begin submitting the names and their stories and different things that are important to them to throw their name in the hat on getting this facility named. And so the survey is at www.surveymonkey.com/r/gardencityaquatictheme. This will be put onto the city website and social media as well. The survey will ask three questions. Please describe one or two of your fondest memories of the big pool, when you tell friends and family why you live in Garden City and what you're most proud of. What do you tell them? When your friends and family, when you tell friends and family why you live in Garden City and what you're most proud of, what, oh, excuse me, number three. Please tell us what you think would be a great name for the aquatic facility. You may submit up to three names below. For each of your top three names, explain in a 150 to 300 words why you believe they would be the best option. No names will be considered without any accompanying written descriptions. The survey will remain open until April 6th and Confluence will take all of the responses and put together theming ideas with contest submissions and present them to a naming committee. The committee will borrow the submissions to the top, or well, narrow, excuse me, the submissions to the top three and then the top three will go back to the community to choose their favorite. I hope, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. All right, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Items C through I are staff reports. If you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to try to answer them. If not, I think we're ready for the, oh, no, I guess it's meetings of note. I will note that some of those are already beginning to cancel. Western Kansas Congressional Reception in Washington DC has been canceled. We'll be notifying Citizens Academy participants that the Citizens Academy will be postponed. I've seen that the legislative coffees are postponed as well. At this point in time, our town hall meeting is still scheduled. We may give some thought to the format of that meeting at this point in time, so sort of leaving that time slot and date on the calendar. But maybe, maybe thinking of some digital format in which we could do that, but still keeping it consistent with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, if that's all right.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, we're ready for the consideration of the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2503-2020A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2503-2020A.
So we have a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to building codes for general editing purposes. If approved, it would be ordinance number? Carol?
All right. Back last fall, we adopted the 2018 building codes. There were a few items that we kind of missed. This type of thing happens every time you adopt a new code. There's always something that comes up after the fact, oh, we forgot about this. So we have a few of those corrections that we're presenting to you. We wanted to get this ordinance in before April 1st because that's the official day that we go to 2018 and we don't go back to the 2009. Right now, we'll take 2009 or 2018, but after April 1st, only 2018. So there's a few just clerical errors, but the major items, I just kind of wanted to go over really quick. The first one is Section 105.2, and that is the work exempt from permit. And this is dealing with the IBC, which is dealing with commercial structures. In this section, there are a list of items that says, in the IBC, it says these items are exempt from permit, so you don't need a permit to do these items. The city went ahead and deleted some of these numbers so that we would require a permit. These are items that we require permits that mentions in the zoning ordinance, it requires a permit. So we exempted some or deleted some of these items. There was one in this section that was missed and that was number six sidewalks. So we are proposing to delete that one, meaning a person would have to get a permit to put a sidewalk in at a commercial business. The second item is basically the same thing, but it's not for the IBC, it's for the IRC, which is the International Residential Code. However, when we first adopted the 2018 code, we missed this section altogether. So we are proposing to add in some items that will be deleted, so these items will require a permit for residential structures or lots. And this one, I'll go ahead and read these ones off. It's the number one, which is accessory structures, number two fences, number five sidewalks and driveways, and number 10 decks. And once again, these are items that we require permits for in the zoning regulations. We've always required permits for them. So we are requesting to delete these items. It's a double negative, so it's hard to say, so.
Right, meaning that there would be required permits.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And the last item I wanted to touch on is in the National Electric Code. In the National Electric Code, it states that buildings can have their service disconnect either outside or inside. This was discussed heavily with the Building Safety Board of Appeals and their direction was they felt commercial buildings, it needs to be outside and outside only, the safety disconnect. But residential can be either inside or outside. So they proposed that change, but when we went to adopt the 2018 code, for some reason, it didn't get in the final copy. So we are proposing that to go the way that they had recommended. We did meet with. We did meet with the Building Safety Board of Appeals with all of these items. We went through them, and they were in agreement with how they are written and proposed to you today. So staff and the Building Safety Board of Appeals does recommend approval. You can either approve today, make some changes and approve it, table it, or you can not approve it.
Any further questions for Carol?
So how would they actually, when you put out just corrections or deletions for future things that we find, how would that be handled as far as, would that be just an appendix index insert, or would that be highlighted within the section of the code?
Actually, in working with our city council, the recommendation was to just completely replace it with the new one. So if you read closely in it, this is actually removing that entire code and then replacing it basically with the same thing, except with a few exceptions. So we'll still just have one document.
Right.
It'll just be this.
That's updated on a contingency basis.
Yeah, yeah.
Because most of the engineers and architects, they have their own books that they would go through, and so they would have, they would have that, would they pick that up from the city or would that be delivered?
Yeah, we would, if this were to be approved, we would get the information out to as many people as we can to come in and either probably either send out a PDF for them of the new copy, and obviously we'll have copies here too at the city offices.
Any further questions? So we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2861-2020.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve issuing a request for qualifications for construction manager at risk services contract for the aquatics facility project.
Good afternoon again. At the commission meeting on February 18th, staff and Confluence presented to you three different forms to move forward with construction of the project. And what the commission came up with was city manager at risk. And so before you today is to put that RFQ out for the city manager at risk. And you have that, the RFQ in your packet that Jennifer put in there. But if the, if the RFQ has, it has a response date of April 13th, but it opens today if you approve it. And if approved, a representative from the governing body is requested for the selection committee, which will review the submittals, conduct interviews, and negotiate a contract for the governing body approval. So in the alternatives, approve issuance of the RFQ and appoint a commissioner to the selection committee. In alternative two, the governing body may defer action until a later date, and staff recommends alternative one.
So this is, this is construction manager at risk, even though the city manager might be at risk, I don't know.
On this project, I'm sure.
Some days, yeah. I really appreciate that, and I know, I thank you for the work we did last time, and I think we asked a lot of really great questions. The process is really good, and I've already spoken about commissioners who have asked, and so I've spoken with Jennifer about that. So are there any, any other questions for Andy? I know this is Jennifer's, but if there's not?
I make a motion. We approve the issuance of the RFQ and appoint on a recommendation or recommending Commissioner Oates to be the, on the selection committee.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would nominate Commissioner Dick to be.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so I think that we've already talked, I think I've already talked to Jennifer and myself on Commissioner Dick, so I don't think it's the.
I'll revise that. I'll revise, I'll update that motion to Commissioner Dick.
And I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Either one.
It's gonna be a flip flop, we're gonna have a, you cannot fight it out, though.
Yeah, no touching.
So item C.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the bid for the purchase of cellular phones for the Garden City Police Department. I will tell you that we would ask that you remove this item for consideration. We found an error in the bidding process that we intend to restart. So if it's all right, we can move on to item D.
Yes.
The governing body is asked to consider.
B.
B.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this, the goals.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve ratifying the 2020, 2021 city commission's strategic goals. The commission met on February 19th to evaluate the organizational performance over the previous year, review a financial forecast for the taxing funds, analyze the work of the capital improvement planning committee. The commission also brainstormed goals for the coming year and then prioritized the ones that were most important, organized the high priority goals into a draft set of strategic goals. So the commission has historically ratified this document in a public meeting. We then used that throughout the course of the year, including the creation of the proposed budget, reporting back to the commission during public meetings over the course of the year, and then finally in your evaluation of the performance of the city manager. So we would request that you consider formally ratifying the strategic goals for 2020 and 2021, which is alternative one.
I appreciate the capture of all of these. I think it was very well written, and I think it really talked about the work we did as a commission, so I really appreciate that. So are there any comments or questions about this document?
I make a motion. We approve the strategic goals as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
We'll go to D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Fannie County regarding the update of the 2018 building codes.
Okay. These two items, this one and then the following one are the exact same thing, one's for Fannie County, one's for Holcombe. I'm just going to talk about them both once. We do have an interlocal agreement, as you're aware, with Fannie County and Holcombe to do their planning services and their inspection services. We, in the agreement, it does mention that we follow the 2009 building codes. Since we have updated them to 2018, this is just to update the interlocal agreement, so it says 2018. We did bring this before the Fannie County Commission yesterday and Holcombe City Council last Wednesday. Both of them approved this amendment to the interlocal agreement. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It's just kind of cleaning up the interlocal agreement so it matches.
This is just a procedure rule. So do we need to, Matt, do we need to do the Fannie County first, and then we'll take a separate motion?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that.
I make a motion. We approve the interlocal agreement as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, so the Holcombe, so you've heard the explanation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the interlocal agreement with Holcombe as presented.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll go ahead.
Sorry.
You get it.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you.
Item 12G, Lana Devall, President and CEO of Fannie County Economic Development Corporation, will provide a quarterly update to the governing body. She's patiently waited. Actually, I don't know if she's patiently waited. She's been in another room.
The feet behind a little bit.
Where she comes.
Yeah. I know where they have a chance to be able to bleep things.
It is.
That was all Melinda's fault.
Was she talking to you?
Well, we have a lag. So, yeah, by the time we heard my name, we're like, uh-oh. So I told her I was telling you it was her fault.
Thank you for being here.
No, thank you. You all received our quarterly report in your very extensive packet. Hopefully you had some time to review that. Not a lot of huge updates to be concerned with, but certainly empirical foods is top of mind for most people still, and things are moving well there. I was, one of the county commissioners told me yesterday morning that there's now a billboard up that has Mullet Industries sign up there that they'll be getting to work on that site, so we're excited for that. Their project manager, Mr. McIntee, all of our favorite Irishmen, is stuck in Ireland as we speak, but he still has a phone, and so he calls me every single day. And so don't worry, we are losing no ground with the project manager. Everything's going well there. No, I really do appreciate that, and we're so fortunate to have the technology we do to allow us to do that. So the Early Learning Network, Third Street Building is moving along, and they are, contractors are hopeful that they will have everything completed by April 30th, which is very exciting. And we have had a preliminary walkthrough with KDHE, and while construction's been going on, so obviously it's not a licensing visit, but we did want to get them out and get them familiar with the building, so if there were questions, they could ask them as we go along. And we have also, we ensured that the architect worked with the State Fire Marshal's Office all the way through the design, so that we made sure everything fit code, and hopefully we won't have any issues there, so.
Being proactive, I think. And I also saw there was a new driveway and a sidewalk, which is, looks incredible. So is it a driveway or is it a?
On the backside?
Yeah, it looks incredible.
Yeah, that's, that's designed to be the drop-off area.
Okay, okay.
And then there'll be staff parking accommodated there as well.
Wow, very nice.
Yeah, we're really excited.
Yeah, really nice work.
It's gonna be an awesome facility. We're really excited about it. So that board of directors is, is getting up to speed very quickly and learning to function very fast. It's tough when it's a brand-new organization, there's a lot of things that go into that, but they're doing a great job, so we're really pleased with that. We also, Economic Development, FCEDC's side, hosted our first community capacity building related to childcare and early learning. The city of Salina was gracious enough to act as our test case and brought 10 people from Salina out here for a day and a half, which is not long enough. We thought it wasn't long enough. We designed it as a two-day boot camp. However, Salina has been in a very similar situation to us in that they've been looking at, at the options for a couple of years. So we felt it was okay to shorten theirs up a little bit at their request, but I think they would agree to. They really need to be two days long. There's just so much to it. But it was a really good experience for us. It was a good opportunity for us to see how it was going to work when we were explaining things to people, and we do have them compiling surveys to give us feedback and let us know how things went. And we did record video as much of it as we could, but we have it on like four different devices, filled up a card, had to replace the card. So we don't know how it'll splice together, but someday, if you want to see it, and you have a day and a half, you can come watch it, so. Which you may all have.
Yeah.
Very soon, that may be the most entertaining thing available to you.
Ben's watched a lot of things.
Outside of that, I mean, obviously, we are not in a bubble at economic development. We know there's a lot going on in the community. We are staying very current on the information coming out of our SBA with the opportunities that are going to be available for our businesses. Those are changing almost as rapidly as the, as the health recommendations are, so we're keeping a good eye on those, keeping our community informed of those. It's going to be challenging for certain. Our hospitality industry is gonna, is gonna have some challenges. We know that our hotels, it's, it's gonna create some challenges. So obviously, we're going to be available to help with that however we can.
So I have a question concerning, I know that a lot of construction, when people come in, they'll be, they'll be bringing people, construction workers from, you know, out of, out of city, because we obviously don't have enough in our, in our city. I mean, I wish we did, but, right. And so, so how, are you, are you making recommendations to follow those guidelines, or how are they going to? Because I know with empirical and then also, and Starbond is a local contractor, but they'll probably need additional. So I'm curious about what, what steps you're taking to help with that, or, because I know you are taking steps, I'm just curious.
And I'm sorry, I just want to clarify and understand what you're asking for sure, Mayor. So you're saying if contractors are coming into the community, are we sharing that information with them about COVID-19?
Right, yeah. How, are you, are you kind of the, okay. I wondered how they were, were going to be handling that.
Yeah, well, and OSHA is doing a really tremendous job, so those construction companies are absolutely getting really good real-time information, just again, because it's hard to say, no, just stop building that, you'll be fine. That, it's just, it's, it's hard to make those decisions, and most of them get to work outside at this point in the construction, which is a good thing. They, they can keep their six-foot distance from one another and keep working. So, yeah, I would, I mean, certainly, we're happy to continue push that information out there, but again, OSHA is doing a tremendous job of, of keeping those.
Yeah, thank you.
Did somebody else? Yeah. I thought you had a question. Okay. I do want to quickly update you on our pandemic preparedness at FCEDC. So we, we put a full travel restriction on all of our team last Monday, got laughed at, put it in a full week ahead of anybody else jumping on that locally, but we don't care. We are okay with being laughed at. There were two out of town. One was an overnight conference, and then Nicole was scheduled to be out of town on Friday, and I said, no, if, if we can't do it by phone call, we just don't need to do it. So that's how that's going to work. So we're glad we did that. All of our duties can be now, can be done remotely, so everybody has access to their desktop from their homes. And we would anticipate that today will probably be the last day that we actually operate with normal operating hours in the office, because we have that opportunity to work from home. So obviously, we'll still be available should we need to meet with somebody in person, but the goal is obviously to contain the issue, and we recognize that this community is really important in feeding the world. And so we have to do everything we can to protect our workforce and to protect our communities. So we would encourage anyone who can do that to choose to do that. And for goodness sakes, use the grocery pickup. Quit going into the store. Nobody needs milk that bad. So, anyway, so we will continue to work normal, continue with the same output. One thing that probably, we do want to make sure people are aware of, we are following the Attorney General's guidance as far as staying in compliance with coma through this period. And I'm sure Matt is well aware, but AG put an opinion out yesterday, but is actually working on a formal guidance document for all those who are subject to the coma requirements. As of now, our board meeting, which regular scheduled meeting, was scheduled for next Wednesday, we have put that into a teleconference format, and it will be livestreamed to allow it to still be public and to continue to offer public comment as necessary.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for us?
No, thank you for all the, the excellent work and working around, workarounds.
Yeah, this community is amazing, and I know everybody that's come up here hasn't made that comment, but it is such a blessing to live in a community where people work together, and we don't have to wonder if the city knows what the county's doing or vice versa. It is such an incredible blessing to have seamless government. So thank you for what you do. Get further apart and stay home. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lana.
With that, we're ready for item 12H. The governing body is asked to consider and approve four appointments to the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Chief Hughes?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As Matt talked to you about earlier at the pre-meeting, on the advisory board, we have a unique makeup of our board, it's made up of different members of our community, whether it's ethnicity, education, so forth. And we have five vacant board positions currently with the African-American community, homemaker, social service communities, and student representatives from both the Garden City High School and the college. Garden City resident Sonia Taylor has submitted an application to be considered for the African-American community vacancy. Margie Pruitt has submitted an application to consider, be considered for the homemaker vacancy. And Garden City resident Destiny Lowden has submitted an application to be considered for the social services vacancy. Also, Garden City resident Darla Sammy, who has served on the board as the business representative since 2016, has also submitted an application to be reappointed to the board with her term expiring December 2022. Garden City resident Nicole Hahn has also submitted an application for consideration appointment for the business representative vacancy as, or position as well. The alternatives are to appoint Sonia Taylor, Margie Pruitt, Destiny Lowden to fill the vacant positions with terms expiring in December 2022, and reappoint Darla Sammy to a second term expiring December 2022. Alternative two is the same as one with the exception of not reappointing Darla Sammy, but appoint Nicole Hahn as the business representative. Or alternative three, do not appoint these applicants, recommend that the board continue to recruit board members. The recommendation from the advisory board is to, to the governing body is choose alternate one, to appoint Sonia Taylor, Margie Pruitt, and Destiny Lowden to the vacant positions, and reappoint Darla Sammy to a second.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sonia Taylor, Margie Pruitt, and Destiny Lowden to the vacant positions and reappoint our Sammy to the second term.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So any further discussion? I do want to say before we do this, I appreciate the, the work that's been into the application and your recruiting efforts. I think that really speaks to the value of your board, and so I enjoyed reading their applications, and I didn't get a chance to call or check with them, but I, I know this is an important part of what you do, and so thank you for doing that.
Yes, and it was also our staff. Yes, and it was also, our staff has really reached out, working with the board to do a lot of...
A lot of, yeah, great diversity. So it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're ready for the consent agenda. Commissioner Ortiz indicated to me he'd like the minutes to reflect on item I-1, that he abstained from that. But the appropriate motion would be to approve items I-1 through 5.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 5.
Second.
So it's been moved in second, and with the abstention of Commissioner Ortiz from item 1, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Ready for Commissioner reports.
All right, well, I wanted to thank Dr. Burns for coming in and updating all of us on the ever-moving COVID-19. It is, it's just crazy how it just, you're typing something to send out, and then you have to hit the delete button and delete everything because it's changed. I do wanna encourage people to put that number in your phone, because that, I mean, that is something to think about with all of the different phone calls that we get, and you don't know if they're spam or not, but, so you put 6202723600 in your phone as the Fannie County Health Department, so that when that number calls, you know that it is a legitimate phone call. And I just also, you know, all of the points, you know, reminding people to be kind to one another and to reach out to your neighbors, especially your senior neighbors or families who are struggling. I know that there are a lot of people who are losing their jobs right now because of the uncertainty, and, you know, if there's any way that we can help them, or we can just reach out to them and see what they need through FaceTime, and to be able to, you know, help them out too. I was also excited to see the diversity on the police citizen boards. And I think that's something that, you know, when we're recruiting advisory board members, or even just, you know, people to be more civically engaged in the community, or serving on a nonprofit board, you know, think about the makeup of those boards to make sure that they're a little bit more representative of our community, you know, reaching out to those different ethnic groups, reaching out to different socioeconomic levels, and getting as many people engaged as we possibly can. And last, fill out your census survey, because I got mine in the mail, and I wanted to put it on Facebook, but I thought I'd look kinda cheesy, so I didn't. But fill it out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say a lot of the same things, but it's worth saying. Again, great work by the county health department and Dr. Burns and everybody involved with that. And we have a really good team in place here, and that's very reassuring. Also, make sure, I mean, if you're gonna have some time at home, fill out that census. Make sure when you're doing your FaceTime or hangouts or Zoom meetings, make sure you tell everybody else...
Yes.
To take that time to do that, because like we've heard, this is one of the most important things that we can do as a city for the next 10 years, is to make sure we get an accurate count. And the best way we can do that, get an accurate count, is by making sure everybody fills out that survey, because now we have another obstacle with doing that door-to-door enumeration later on. So the more we can get people to do it now, the less burden we're gonna have later. And then the last thing, if you are able to, and you are taking advantage of services such as delivery and stuff like that, make sure, if you have the ability, to make sure you tip those people a little bit more than you would. Their jobs will probably be limited, especially going forward. So keep those people in mind to make sure that you support them as much as you are able to. I know not everybody can, but they will probably be looking to that kind of support more than they had in the past. Thank you.
Great to see what real men, real leaders is doing in our community. Great to, you know, have that organization really kinda start up and help our children. It was a good pre-meeting. What I'd like to say to that is, if you're looking at serving on the city commission, that's one of the many ways to really get your foot in the door, but helps you get to understand the community better. I know we, we're gonna have the Citizens Academy as well as the Citizens Police Academy starting, but because of the situation across the nation, I know we're postponing those. But those are other ways that would be really good for people that are looking to serve on the city commission, to really educate yourself and get that behind-the-scenes look at how the community actually operates. So if you have a chance, and there's lots of ways to do it, but I would really highly suggest and advise, people get on any of the advisory boards that we have, or if you haven't already done so, get on the Citizens Academy and be a part of that, and also the Citizens Police Academy when it opens back up again. The other thing I wanted to ask, and if you do, and if you're looking for something to do, I know, are we gonna start doing the cleanup?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna mention that. So if you're looking at something to do, and everybody's tired of streaming videos and binge-watching videos, you can work to clean out your, clean up the area around your home. And the spring cleanup will be March 30th through April 10th to accommodate the needs of residents, as well as the city collection crews. The city has been divided into eight different areas, and it'll be different days that they'll be working in the community. There's a map that is probably on the website, and we'll have that out to show you where our crews will be at to pick up those items. Another quick reminder is to use our recycling facility. That's very important, as well as for paints and other strange things. Use our hazardous waste facility. Don't throw the paints and stuff away. We do have a hazardous waste facility that you can do that, and you can go online to the website and find out the hours and location and time of that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add on top of everybody's comments, just, I don't have to say it, but another thing too, just to kind of let everyone know, this isn't, this isn't our city, this is your city. This is youth, this is elderly, this is Garden City. It's not ours, it's not yours, it's Garden City. So it's everyone's just taking their part and doing what they have to do to just make it great, keep it that way. There are many leaders in Garden City, and we consider you, the residents, the taxpayers, as Garden City. So I'd just like to applaud everyone. This is an opportunity where we are here for you. So I just wanna make it known that if there's any, any questions that you have, please reach out. Do your research. Like Dr. Burns said, just realize that there are fake announcements out there, and don't believe those. Go through your local government, go through those professionals that we have here in Garden City. So I can't just, I can't stress that enough, just, like I said, there are leaders here, and appreciate everyone's part in keeping us safe and healthy.
So thank you again for everyone being here and adhering to the guidelines as much as we can. And I appreciate the work, the extra work that the staff is doing. And I know that there are lots of things that our city staff is doing to really keep us all safe and themselves safe. And so I do wanna say thank you for the advisory committee pre-meeting. I really appreciated and enjoyed listening, as Commissioner Sessna really talked about, that's a really great opportunity, so I won't repeat that. Real men, real leaders, you know, when they first started, I mean, it was kind of a hodgepodge, and then what they've grown into and been able to accomplish is tremendous. I just, I really appreciate them being here and really pointing. I think they've really enlarged their scope and also the things that they're doing. So I was really excited about that. I wanna talk a little bit about the census, when, you know, Commissioner Dick talked about the census, it really is a 10-year, it's an investment in our community. So it starts in Garden City and starts in Kansas, but it's a 10-year investment. So again, one deposit, when filling out that, makes this 10-year investment in our community. And I, I can't remember the figures, every time I hear it, I'm just like, are you kidding me? But it can make a huge difference. So please, please, fill out the census, and we've got some things planned to make sure for the kickoff. The last thing I wanna make sure, as I thought about this, as I was just getting ready to turn on my sprinkler system, and I didn't because it rained. So that's all you who did, I'm sorry. Y'all should've trusted that. But I know Fred Jones, who's the director of our water department, there are, again, we have some controllers that are out there in there, they're for quality control, but they're for residential watering and landscaping. They're water sense irrigation controllers. Now, there are several here in town that you can pick up, and we do have a limited number of rebates. So if you are looking for a way to cut costs and save water, again, I think water conservation is one of the big things that we're doing as a city. I just, I thought about it, and I said, you know, I wanna make sure and highlight that and mention it. It is coming up when it's time to turn on your sprinklers, and again, we begin the summer watering. But just wanna make sure, mention that, it's on our website, and there are also the rebate form is. And so again, I think it's a really great opportunity to really save some water and also save some dollars. With that, I, unless there was anything else, I just wanna...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say just one thing real quick on, as far as utilities go.
Okay, yeah.
There's been lots of talk and questions about, you know, whether the city's gonna continue to do our normal practice. We actually stopped last week from the normal process of disconnecting utilities. We did that, we started that on Thursday. As you may know, the governor issued an executive order yesterday afternoon directing all utilities, whether you're public or private utilities, that to stop the practice of shutting off folks for any reason, and that includes all residential and commercial accounts. And that, that covers natural gas, electric, water, telecommunications, and internet service providers.
Wow.
So just to pass that on, so that the folks out there will know too. So thank you.
Yeah, I wanna make sure you realize that Garden City being a leader, I mean, a lot of the things that we're doing, other communities have picked up and done also. And so, you know, really, that modeling, I think, I appreciate Commissioner Ortiz using the hand sanitizer, but modeling, I can't tell you how important that is to really model that behavior. And again, it's really all of us modeling that. So I know it's inconvenient, I know it's, this is a tough time, but we are gonna keep ourselves informed and making sure we're moving forward. And with that, we'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you.